Okay. Okay, thank you for joining us this afternoon for the July 7th, Montessorino City Council Special Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For today's meeting, we're using Zoom to host the City Council Special Meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hands. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can be also submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to adhere the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide any feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I hereby call the special meeting of the City Council of Montessorino for Wednesday, July 7th to order. Roll call, please.
Yes. City Council Member Lawler?
Present.
Council Member Mekachuk is out. So Council Member Turner?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Alahi?
Present.
And Mayor Luthold?
Present, thank you. All right. So moving forward, I don't believe there are any changes to orders to of the day. So I will open briefly for oral communications. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak on matters not on the agenda, which is the closed session or the Rena numbers appeal. If there are any members of the public here wishing to speak on subjects other than those, please raise your hand to be recognized for oral communication. Seeing none, we will close oral communication and open communications on the issue of the closed session. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on the Public Employee Performance Evaluation City Manager closed session that the council is about to convene? If so, please raise your hand to be recognized. Seeing none, we will close public comment on item one. And Mr. Rudin, did we want to? Do you have any opinion on whether Mr. Leonardi should join us in the closed session? Or whether that's simply up to the council?
That is up to the council.
Okay. I would actually like to go ahead and have, if it's okay with my fellow council members, raise your hand if you have an objection to this. I'd like to have Mr. Leonardi join us briefly at the opening of the closed session so that we can speak with him about some matters related to the closed session and then go forward from there. Any objections, please raise your hand or speak up. Seeing none, we will now adjourn to the closed session. Ms. Gonzalez, if you will, please keep the, and Mr. Kyson, if you will keep this meeting alive, however you do that, so we can rejoin when we come back from closed session. We will do that as promptly as we can. For council members, please make sure you fully exit the session here.
Okay, so it appears we have our quorum to return. I see Ms. Lawler, Ms. Turner is back in as well. Mr. Law, he said he might be a few moments late, so with our quorum, I will reconvene to open session. And we have nothing to report from the closed session. We'll now turn to the first matter of unfinished business. That is the consideration and review of the draft appeal regarding to A-bag regarding the Rena numbers and providing direction to staff. Do we have a staff report on this, Mr. Leonardi?
Well, I can, Mayor Lou Ho, this is Martin Carver with EMC Planning Group. I see that the city manager isn't at the table yet, but I'm happy to move this item forward for you. This item was heard last week and we got a lot of good comments and I revised the document based on the comments. And so tonight, we want to get a sense that the letter is ready to be submitted. Get any final comments? Of course, the deadline is tomorrow afternoon. So, but we do have a window of opportunity to, you know, wordsmith a little bit if that's required. But basically, at this point, we're just checking in to make sure that we got the letter right and are poised to submit it on behalf of the city of Montesereno.
Great, thank you very much. All right. So with that, let me go ahead and open this matter to public comment. If we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter, please raise your hands and we can recognize you. Seeing none, I do see that Mr. Law is joining us. All right, seeing no members of the public wishing to speak, we will close public comment. And we will now return this matter to council questions and discussion. Council members, please go ahead and either raise your hand or wave at me and if you'd like to discuss this.
Ms. Law. Hi, thank you. Thank you, Martin. This is a really great appeal letter. Very well written. I just have one correction for you. The, where is it? It's actually the Lexington Reservoir is not the reservoir that's offline. It's actually the Anderson Reservoir. So make that clarification, but the Lexington Reservoir is at 28% capacity. It's at a historic low. So, and actually, all 10 reservoirs are at a all-time 20-year historic low. So we just need to make sure that that's fixed.
Thank you very much.
And that, then that's it. Otherwise, it looks great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Turner.
Yes, I just wanted to let Mr. Carver know that, you know, you did a good job considering the number of comments that we gave you. So I just wanted to say thank you so very much.
Very kind. We did our best with it. Really appreciate working with you guys.
Great, thank you. Mr. Law, any comments or follow-up?
Yeah, I do. And again, I want to commend you for putting it all together efficiently and taking your comments and inscriving them. There was one part of the details that has to do with the survey that we didn't get into last time and I didn't notice it last time either. Is that going to be submitted? These are submission number 70. It's an attachment survey respondent contact information.
Oh, I'm afraid I'm at a loss and I don't have the attachment in my packet. Mayor Protem. Sorry.
I was gonna say, are you referring to the attachment?
Yeah, it's an attachment to the packet. It's called submission number 70, survey respondent contact information.
I spoke to Rachel about that and that is a form that we will be filling out the ad hoc committee with the city manager and her help, I believe, after we approve this appeal letter. Am I correct, Martin? Can you confirm that?
Oh, yes. Thank you. I now know what you're talking about. I'm so sorry. But yes, the actual submittal form, Rachel in our office, is already geared up to do that immediately tomorrow morning, once we have city council approval. So yes, that'll be dealt with.
Okay, well, I wanted to discuss it because some of it has been filled out and I had some concerns on some of the answers that are in there. So it may be a good idea, since you're finalizing it, to go through that and see if some of the comments make sense.
How would you like to handle, how would you advise us to handle that? I know that Rachel can dive into this tomorrow morning. Would she get you on the phone? What would you advise?
I guess there's an ad hoc committee already set up, so I can't get into that loop. It's only council member Lawler and council member Turner. I can only discuss it with you in open board meetings.
Got it.
They're not that extensive. If you have them in front of you, maybe I can run through those.
I'm very sorry. You're talking about submission number 70, is that right?
Yeah.
It's attachment A to the, to the draft letter. And attachment A is information about local planning factors and affirmatively further fair housing from the local jurisdiction survey Montesereno response. And it looks like that may actually have already been submitted, since it looks like a printout. That may be something that the city had to submit earlier in the Rena process and may have been done by the, by the city planner.
Oh, in fact, you're, you're absolutely, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
Go ahead.
Very sorry for speaking out of turn. I, I was just recognizing that this is the local jurisdiction survey on housing factors. This was submitted in January, February, I believe. So it's a done deal if I, if I understand it correctly.
Yeah, I guess that might make things easier. On the other hand, there are contradictions here that we may need to address then. Because one of the questions asked is, do you have a sewer problem? It says, no, we don't. And yet in our appeal now, we're saying, no, we may have a sewer problem. It talks about whether there's a water capacity issue and we say, there does not appear to be an issue. And at this time, there is. So those are things that kind of grabbed my attention. And I, so if you can take a look at it, see if there's somewhere you can address that, because I guess you could say it's a changing situation because of the drought and everything else. But they'll confront us with that and say, hey, you said there's no problem before. Now you're saying there is. The other question that bothered me really was the answer to the question, how would you rate the balance between low-wage jobs and the number of homes affordable to low-wage workers in your jurisdiction? And the answer was imbalanced. I really hate that answer because imbalance is what they're going after. They're saying, well, you guys are imbalanced, so build some more housing. I think the correct answer is it's really not applicable. We don't have any low-wage jobs in Montesereno, as far as I know. Most of the job service, low-wage jobs are people who are temporary workers, either, you know, for providing house services or contractors or, you know, or gardeners or cleaners. But I don't think we have full-time low-wage workers. The only staff we have is Montesereno staff and the city, and those are really low-wage workers. So I wouldn't have answered it as imbalanced. I would have just said it's not, not applicable, because they're going to ask you. You said, you know, that's one of the criteria they use for giving you housing because of being imbalanced. So those are some of my concerns. I don't know how you address that if this is already submitted. But I will, I've kind of highlighted this and I can forward it to you. I don't know if I have your email address, Mr. Carver. I'd be happy to email it to you and you can take a look at it and see if there's some.
Yeah, that would be great. I, I can either give it to your city clerk or I can just tell you it right now.
Yeah, whatever is easy for you. Right now is good.
Okay, it is Carver, C-A-R-V, as in Victor, E-R, at EMCplanning.com.
Okay, great. Yeah, I forward that to you and forward it to the, yeah, I guess since we're doing it in the meeting, I can forward it to our ad hoc committee also and they can take a look at it and see if they have any thoughts on it. And then you guys can work together.
Yeah, and I guess I would comment that, Mayor Protem, that we are at the outset saying that there is some change of circumstances since the February submittal. And I think, I know that water and.
Okay, so it appears we have our quorum to return. I see Ms. Lawler, Ms. Turner is back in as well. Mr. Lahy said he might be a few moments late, so with our quorum, I will reconvene to open session. And we have nothing to report from the closed session. We'll now turn to the first matter of unfinished business. That is the consideration and review of the draft appeal regarding to A Bag regarding the Rena numbers and providing direction to staff. Do we have a staff report on this, Mr. Leonardis?
Well, I can, Mayor Luthol, this is Martin Carver with EMC Planning Group. I see that the city manager isn't at the table yet, but I'm happy to move this item forward for you. This item was heard last week and we got a lot of good comments and I revised the document based on the comments. And so tonight, we want to get a sense that the letter is ready to be submitted. Get any final comments? Of course, the deadline is tomorrow afternoon. So, but we do have a window of opportunity to, you know, wordsmith a little bit if that's required. But basically, at this point, we're just checking in to make sure that we got the letter right and are poised to submit it on behalf of the City of Montesereno.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so with that, let me go ahead and open this matter to public comment. If we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter, please raise your hands and we can recognize you. Seeing none, I do see that Mr. Lahy is joining us. All right, seeing no members of the public wishing to speak, we will close public comment. And we will now return this matter to council questions and discussion. Council members, please go ahead and either raise your hand or wave at me and if you'd like to discuss this. Ms. Lawler?
Thank you. Thank you, Martin. This is a really great appeal letter. Very well written. I just have one correction for you. The, where is it? It's actually, the Lexington Reservoir is not the reservoir that's offline. It's actually the Anderson Reservoir. Make that clarification, but the Lexington Reservoir is at 28% capacity. It's at a historic low, so and actually, all 10 reservoirs are at a all-time 20-year historic low. So, we just need to make sure that that's fixed.
Thank you very much.
And that, then that's it. Otherwise, it looks great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Turner?
Yes, I just wanted to let Mr. Carver know that, you know, you did a good job considering the number of comments that we gave you. So, I just wanted to say thank you so very much.
Very kind. We did our best with it. Really appreciate working with you guys.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lahy, any comments or follow-up?
Yeah, I do. And again, I want to commend you for putting it all together efficiently and taking your comments and inscriving them. There was one part of the details that has to do with the survey that we didn't get into last time, and I didn't notice it last time either. Is that going to be submitted? These are submission number 70. It's an attachment, survey respondent contact information.
Oh, I'm afraid I'm at a loss and I don't have the attachment in my packet. Well, tell me a little. Sorry.
I was gonna say, are you referring to the attachment?
Yeah, it's an attachment to the packet. It's called submission number 70, survey respondent contact information.
I spoke to Rachel about that, and that is a form that we will be filling out the ad hoc committee with the city manager and her help, I believe, after we approve this appeal letter. Am I correct, Martin? Can you confirm that?
Oh, yes. Thank you. I now know what you're talking about. I'm so sorry. But yes, the actual submittal form, Rachel in our office, is is already geared up to do that immediately tomorrow morning, once we have city council approval. So, yes, that'll be dealt with.
Okay, well, I wanted to discuss it because some of it has been filled out and adds some concerns on some of the answers that are in there. So, it may be a good idea, since you're finalizing it, to go through that and see if some of our comments make sense.
How would you like to handle, how would you advise us to handle that? I know that Rachel can dive into this tomorrow morning. Would she get you on the phone? What would you advise?
I guess there's an ad hoc committee already set up, so I can't get into that loop. It's only council member Lawler and council member Turner. I can only discuss it with you in open board meetings. So, they're not that extensive. If you have that in front of you, maybe I can run through those.
I'm very sorry. You're talking about submission number 70, is that right?
Yeah.
It's attachment A to the, to the draft letter. And attachment A is information about local planning factors and affirmatively further fair housing from the local jurisdiction survey, Montesereno response. And it looks like that may actually have already been submitted. Since it looks like a printout. That may be something that the city had to submit earlier in the Rena process and may have been done by the, by the city planner.
Oh, in fact, you're, you're absolute, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
Go ahead.
I'm very sorry for speaking out of turn. I was just recognizing that this is the local jurisdiction survey on housing factors. This was submitted in January, February, I believe. So, it's a done deal if I, if I understand it correctly.
Yeah, I guess that might make things easier. On the other hand, there are contradictions here that we may need to address then. Because one of the questions I ask is, do you have a sewer problem? It says, no, we don't. And yet, in our appeal now, we're saying, no, we may have a sewer problem. It talks about whether there's a water capacity issue, and we say, there does not appear to be an issue. And at this time, there is, so those are things that kind of grabbed my attention. And I, so if you can take a look at it, see if there's somewhere you can address that, because I guess you could say it's a changing situation because of the drought and everything else. But, but they'll confront us with that and say, hey, you said there's no problem before, now you're saying there is. The other question that bothered me really was the answer to the question, how would you rate the balance between low-wage jobs and the number of homes affordable to low-wage workers in your jurisdiction? And the answer was imbalanced. I really hate that answer because imbalance is what they're going after. They're saying, well, you guys are imbalanced, so build some more housing. I think the correct answer is it's really not applicable. We don't have any low-wage jobs in Montesereno, as far as I know. Most of the job service, low-wage jobs are people who are temporary workers, either, you know, for providing house services or contractors or, or, you know, or gardeners or cleaners, but I don't think we have full-time low-wage workers. The only staff we have is Montesereno staff and the city, and those are really low-wage workers. So, I wouldn't have answered it as imbalanced. I would just said, it's not, not applicable, because they're gonna ask you. You said, you know, that's one of the criteria they use for giving you housing because of being imbalanced. So, those are some of my concerns. I don't know how you address that if this is already submitted. But I will, I've kind of highlighted this and I can forward it to you. I don't know if I have your email address, Mr. Carver. I'd be happy to email it to you and you can take a look at it and see if there's some.
Yeah, that would be great. I, I can either give it to your city clerk or I can just tell you it right now.
Yeah, whatever is easy for you. Right now is good.
Okay, it is Carver, C-A-R-V, isn't Victor, E-R, at EMCplanning.com.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll forward that to you and forward it to the, yeah, I guess since we're doing it in the meeting, I can forward it to our ad hoc committee also, and they can take a look at it and see if they have any thoughts on it. And then you guys can work together.
Yeah, and I guess I would comment that, Mayor Potem, that we are at the outset saying that there is some change of circumstances since the February submittal. And I think, I know that water and fire danger and drought were raised as some of the issues and the reasons for the change of circumstances. So, it sounds like that's the best place to wrap this in. And, and Mr. Carver, it may be, when you look at this, that may be something to just strengthen a little bit in the, in the factors in the main letter.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I had to convert the PDF afterwards. It may read a little funny, so good luck.
Right, any further council comments, Ms. Turner?
Yes, I just wanted to, to let Mr. Carver know that the letter from the mayor that, that he drafted, that we approved in January has to be submitted separately from the attachments. So, you know, you have, you have the appeals process, the attachment from the appeals, and then the letter from the mayor.
Okay.
Because I think I noticed that you combined it in, in, in this appeals process.
We'll get it sorted and get it done right.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, my, I apologize for missing that last meeting. However, I do want to add to the consensus of great work. Thank you so much. And then I just want to make sure, and it sounds like that was the form that you all were talking about, the official kind of cover letter form that we have to fill in all of the final boxes for the submittal. Sounds like that's what your staff is working on tomorrow morning. So, just wanted to make sure it's going to be part of the final packet, because I understand that is a mandatory item.
Yes.
And, and also, may, may I say something else?
Yes.
I, you also have to identify the point of contact for Montesereno, and I've seen three. One is the city manager, the mayor, or the consulting firm. And so, that has to go in the front part of, part of the form. So, we need to, I guess, decide who we should put in there.
Yeah, I'd suggest Mayor Luthol should be the contact person, since this is an important matter that the city has. And our mayor should lead from the front.
That's fine with me. My contact information, Mr. Carver, I assume you have it or can pull it from the website as well?
Yes, I'm sure, I'm sure we can, or I can contact City Hall if, if it comes to it, but I'm sure we've got it.
Sounds good. And if we have the ability to put multiple comments, contacts, of course, myself, the city manager, yourself, and perhaps the new city planner as well.
Very good.
Sounds like, sounds like primary contact to go ahead and come back to me, and I'll keep an eye out if there's any communications that don't CC other people. All right, anything further? I guess we would be looking for a approval and direction to complete the letter and to approve it in its preliminary form to be signed on behalf of the city as soon as the completed form is available tomorrow.
Sounds good. And I've just emailed my markup to the ad hoc committee and I think to everybody. So, my thought would be we should approve the appeal and the markup to the survey, to the extent it can be changed, I'd leave it, we leave it up to the ad hoc committee to work with the Mr. Carver and make any revisions that are appropriate, so it doesn't have to come back to all of us to be sent out as with those changes. As, as they approve, so, you know.
Sounds good. Mr. Ridden?
Yeah, I would just recommend that you, that the council vote to authorize the submission of the of the Rena appeal by the city manager, you know, incorporating, you know, such edits as may be sent by council member Lahy. And that would obviate the need to have another special meeting to actually finalize the submit, submit this item.
So moved. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Deputy City Clerk, roll call, vote when you have a moment.
Yes, okay. Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Lahy?
Yes.
And Mayor Luthol?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. With nothing further on the agenda this evening, I will go ahead and adjourn the special meeting of the city council for July 7th, 2021. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Bye.